Can Paula see the order? It stands for pledge of allegiance to the state.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Paula, Public Works. Any questions for Paula?
Please pass the law, thanks. Those guys sure did a quick job on the streets.
I do know, public works wise, they are planning on putting up the Christmas lights within the next two days or so. So, the stuff kind of screwed them on getting it started this week, so... But that's Josh wanted me to let you guys know that.
Appreciate it. Anyone have any questions? All right, we'll move on to public utilities. Eric's not here tonight, he was not feeling well, so what do you have for us?
So, that My360, the app that we were going to use, we ran into some issues with it. I met with the representatives last week. And what we thought was going to be four hours notice time if you used too much water or whatever, that's not the case. They're only going to guarantee a day's time. So, for example, if you had a whole second and you left for work, you're not going to know until you get home and catch it yourself. Currently, right now, they're only guaranteeing a day's notice, which yes, is better than the three days that we do. However, I don't know if it's worth the money that it's going to cost to do. Not saying that it's not going to get better in the future, because right now their servers are overloaded, so it takes too long for the data to update, and that's what it is. Right now, it's anywhere from eight to 12 hours behind. So technically, if you had something going on now, within eight, 12 hours, that's not promised, you would know about it. So, I don't know that we spend that kind of money now. I know we did spend the money, however, they will credit us all that money back if we choose not to move forward with it. I just don't know if it's going to be worth it right now until they get their system up and running. So, it's all through that we have that we look at people's leaks. When we first got it, 2015, up until probably 2024, 2021, 2022, somewhere right in there, it only used to be two or three hours behind. So, something happened, then you would know within two, three hours, because it's based off of the data that's coming in, not actual meter reads, which we were under the impression that it was going to go off of meter reads, which is every hour. And that's not the case. So, they did say that if we choose not to go forward with it, that they will credit us that money.
Do you remember how much that was?
Total was like, around $18,000 and some change, but that was going to be with also being able to pay your water bill on that app also. I believe that it was $13,000 or something to get it up and running, and then an additional $700, $7800 a year after that. But that was for also to have, be able to pay your water bill with that app also. I'm not saying that it's not a bad idea to eventually go to it, I just don't think now is the time to go to it, just because they're not going to be, it's not going to do what I believe it should be able to do.
Well, well, we thought it was going to do.
Correct, and that's notifying somebody they have an issue within two, three hours, not 12 hours later.
Right. And you would, you would be able to notify them within that timeframe? Not on weekends, though?
No, we don't, so...
So, it takes three days?
Yeah, we only look at leaks every three days, Monday, Wednesday, Fridays. Per, per our ordinance, that's what we're, we have to do for our ordinance. So, Cloudly looks at all the continuous leaks every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, unless it's a holiday. So, say, for example, we're off, Wednesday, we do leak checks at Wednesday morning, and you have a leak Wednesday afternoon. This last timeframe, you would, we wouldn't know about it until Monday. However, if we did have the system, you would know it, because if you were signed up, you would know it, and then you could call the water department and say, hey, I got a leak, can you cut through my water off?
Right.
So, I mean, it's a catch 22. It's better than what we have, what we're doing, but I don't know if it's worth that kind of money. Because I believe the, to be able to pay, that's, with that app, is what is the most costly, setting up. I think that was right around $7,000 just to set that up. And if we're only going to get, I don't know, 200, 300 people, then you divide that money by 200, 300 people, it's not really a huge benefit, in my opinion.
So, resolution number 16, we passed on June 10th, that was the original. That was for not to exceed $16,760 for setup and training, and then $5,200 annually for subscription. And then we amended that with resolution number 26. I don't have a date on that right now. But that was for $20,151 for setup training in single sign-on, because that was a big thing, and then annual subscriptions of about, basically, $8,000.
Yeah.
So, we're just pretty much taxing all of that right now.
Correct. But if that's what you guys want to do.
Yes.
So, we would have to take action on that next week?
I think so. At least, I would think at least a motion. Would counsel win a resolution, maybe, to basically cancel out the resolution number 26 that was passed?
I'm wondering if we should, since we had one put in there.
I'll think about it a little bit more, maybe, I wish I could all, I don't, still have a good idea on it, but...
Just kind of, just asking? Go ahead, call them tomorrow, say we're not interested in it?
Well, what does counsel think? What does everybody think?
If you're saying it's not worth it?
I, I, I don't think it is.
Yeah. And that's where I'm leaning to, if you said, I mean, I think it'd be a nice service, but that's a lot of money.
You don't need to wait any longer.
It's not going to deliver what you thought.
Yeah, those are the flooders.
Then, we can wait.
And so, we see if their system gets better and is more up to date. If it, if it gets within an hour or two, and they're going to guarantee that, then I'd say, yeah, it's, it's worth it. But if they're only guaranteeing a day, then I don't know that it's really worth it. To me, me personally, me as a department head, it's not worth it. To you as a resident, it's worth it, because if you're signed up, then you know within whatever that timeframe is. So, that's what you guys really need to think about, is it really worth it for the residents? I'm just saying it's not worth it for the money that we're going to spend, because it's not doing what we originally thought it was going to do. Now, yes, it is better than what we currently have, and as long as you're signed up on it, then you'll know. So, like, for example, all weekend long, I got alerts saying I used too much water because kids were at home and showering and everything. So, all weekend long, I got alerts saying, but it's literally eight hours behind.
Right.
But, eight hours is better than three days.
And I agree, I think, as a resident, I would like to have it, but if you're saying it's not worth it, then it's not worth it.
It, it's, it's one of those catch 22s. It's more for the residents, but it still isn't what I believe we were sold it was going to do. And that's what I'm basing it off of, is, no, you said it's based off the readings. I know our meters upload it every hour, so every hour it water went through there, and it was in excess of whatever somebody had to alert set at, it should be notified, and it doesn't do that. I'm not saying they're not going to do upgrades and get that taken care of.
Have they mentioned that at all, when you talked to them?
Yes, so, right now, they're, they're, they don't know when. So, right now, they basically have three, two servers, and they're planning on building two more main servers to be able to compute that data quicker, because now, our gateways only report every hour. Now, the gateways they have report every 15 minutes, so they have to do something anyhow to be able to pull that data in. So, they have to do upgrades, but what's that going to be, a year, two years from now? We, I don't know, and they didn't give me an answer on that. So, I don't know, we spend $20,000 now and hope that it gets better.
Well, I mean, we can always revisit it.
Correct.
You can tell them to reach out to us when they do.
Oh, I'll know.
Okay.
I mean, because it's, it's still linked off of, so the My360 that you, residents would have, is linked off of our software that we have. So, I'll know once they get it up and running, if I click on somebody's account, how far behind, like, if I check mine, how far behind is it? Are we back into an hour window, two hour windows? But if they're only going to guarantee a day, then what's saying it doesn't just slowly get worse and worse and worse? And then, you as a resident, expect it to be now, and now all of a sudden it's not, and well, why'd I even do it? You know what I mean? It, it's, it's a catch 22.
I think it's true.
I definitely applaud Brian for testing and making sure we were getting the bang for the buck, thing for a buck that we were expecting, and making sure that if you go forward with something like this, it wastes taxpayers' money.
Right.
Because this has been a big bummer for everyone if we would have proceeded.
Correct.
So, thank you.
You are. So, good call tomorrow, say, hey, we're not interested in it?
I would say, what does everyone else, anybody else good with that?
And until they, until they get it fixed. I mean, it can be six months, and all of a sudden, it's good to go, and then we look at it again and say, okay, now we're interested because you got it fixed.
Just bring it to us when you, when they get those updated.
Okay.
We'll redo that thing.
Okay.
No resolution, just have it?
I think we should have a resolution, because we have one, don't you?
The PO, and then they can requote us the same price.
Later.
And we'll get another resolution saying we will maybe decide to.
Got it.
I got you, I'll get ready.
I will call them tomorrow.
Emergency, emergency resolution.
All right, and anything else?
I don't have any else.
Any questions for Brian? All right, Brian, thank you.
All right, well, thank you, y'all have a good evening.
Enjoy your tacos.
Yes, go now.
All right, we're going to move on to public safety. Seal good opening police department equipment.
Not much of a seal bid, it was emailed to me, and it was sort of weird. But we only had one bid, it was from Axon. It's in front of you. It's going to be packed, about 28 pages.
Name is what you would, what you would call it?
Yes, if you go to page 10, estimated total was packs, $1,250,008, $896.80. So, it's, I believe the same price that we got before. We can review it, and I'd like to ask counsel, maybe it's too soon to ask counsel, but I can get ready, an emergency resolution for December 9th, we'll forward with this. Or I can do a first reading, I'm not sure how fast, counsel would prefer we do faster.
We have two, we have two meetings coming up, don't we, next week?
We do.
And we have two readings on, put on, we have two readings?
I can do, yeah, first reading on Monday, and then the emergency reading on Tuesday, if that's what you have in mind, yeah, I'm sure.
Input, Chuck?
Sounds good.
Okay.
And then, are you going to let them know about what it's costing to redact?
Oh, yes. So, I did, I finally got all of our six or seven bunches of videos, cases, to public forensics, they have a third-party redaction company we are in contract with, if you need them. It's going to be about $41,000 to get everything redacted through them. So, that's just to clearly say, the ones we know about from 2025 that we had requested. Also, thank you for inspecting inspection of a recording, too. Because we can't charge for inspection, but, because they have to be able to see. But have a happier day.
Now, this is going to take care of that problem for us in the future, that crime.
Correct.
We would have to do this for now.
So, but I, I mean, I can't say it will save us that money, but there's a good chance it will. We could use Axon's software to redact it for a lot cheaper, but some more, some man hours, of course, but you could save $41,000.
And then, but then going forward, you know, it falls into the new law, where we can charge for this stuff.
Yes.
This stuff we can't charge for, this is previous to that.
Right.
That's why we're having to pay the $4,000 out of village funds for somebody to watch videos and then throw them away.
I have not went forward with the quotes I got from public forensics yet, and to be talk to the mayor about this more in depth, but it is an option, if we want to clearly say it's in a way.
All right, dispatch. Dave, did you get the, are you going to go?
I am, yes.
Okay, so Dave and I will be going, and I believe the mayor will be going to meet with the sheriff to get our answers for the dispatch on Friday morning. So, if you have questions that you want us to ask, please get them to Josh by Thursday, so that Josh can get them to us Thursday evening, because we have to be there at 10:30 Friday morning.
Is this Friday?
Yes.
So, please, Thursday, at the latest, get them to Josh, and if you could then forward them to Dave and I. And if you want, I can send Eric a message, too, as well, tonight, to get any questions he has to you as well.
So, I'll meet you guys in Bowling Green?
Okay, so you're going?
Well, no one's told me about it, so.
Oh, okay, that's 10:30. The sheriff, the, Aaron reached out to us and said it's scheduled for 10:30 Friday morning in Bowling Green.
He said you were not going.
Yeah, he said, you're not allowed, no. He's been bad, you know, like...
He was a little bad to me.
I got one at home, buddy.
So, please, 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 get your questions in.
I was supposed to be, it's going to be a meeting at 9:30 to 11:00, but I can, I'll cancel them.
Well, I sure appreciate it, all of you going. I am positive also that you'll have the questions.
Well, I'll send me some.
No, the only other thing is, is kind of let you guys know what the, some of the equipment repair costs. I know you guys probably see the bills fly through here, but we put tires on all the cruisers this year, they all needed them. We had to get batteries in both of the Tahos, and then we just had to put a radiator in one of the cruisers out here as well, so. But, you know, they're 60-something thousand miles on them, but that doesn't count the idle.
Idle hours, yeah.
That's the issue, is, once you get to so many idle hours as a government vehicle, then you're past your warranty, so. But that's all the repairs we've had so far this year, some minor stuff, but...
That truck lives at the repair shop, so.
We got that fixed.
Fixed.
But that is something to consider, if, if counsel wants to purchase a new cruiser for next year, I have to place that bid sooner than later, because everybody places their bids, and then you just fall into line, and I know that ordering them in the past for other departments that I work for, if you wait too long, they'll automatically put you into the next cycle, so it would be a 2027 vehicle instead of a 2026.
So, then that would replace the truck?
I wouldn't replace anything, if it would need.
Right.
I would keep that thing right there, just in case you needed it, because we've already had instances in the past where we've had two vehicles down, and we only had one cruiser and two cops sitting in it, that just doesn't make sense.
But you're saying add a third cruiser?
Yes.
And still hang on to the truck?
Yeah, yeah. And it gives the ability for the officers that come in here, they have to do, go to court, like, I have to go to court tomorrow morning, so it gives the officer the ability to hop in that, take that to court, to take care of those things, or to drop off paperwork to prosecutors' offices, or trainings, or whatever.
My question is, how much is we don't think of that truck in the last year?
Put an engine and a transmission in it.
Basically, a brand-new car.
Correct. Suspension, and that's kind of my, my, what I was telling the mayor, like, you've already, you already pumped a bunch of money in that thing. I don't know if I would get rid of it until I actually died, and then I would get out of here with it. They should have that, that other system on that engine disconnected, too, the one that takes it from eight cylinders to six to four. Oh, I, I don't know. I don't remember the name of that thing. Right. It needs to be disconnected, that grenades those engines. Well, probably did the last one, I don't know. It did. I was told it was lack of oil changes.
I believe that, too.
I did, too. It starves the camp, is what it does. It is the way, but it starves the camp.
Anything else, John?
Nope, that's, that's all.
Okay, Chief Walters did reach out to me, he hurt his back, so he's not here tonight, but he had nothing to report either, and I haven't, and so, that's all we have for public safety. Is there any questions? All right, we're going to move on to economic and community development, Bill?
CSX parking lot.
Yes, so if you turn your packet to the next page there, I printed off the brief conversation I had with Sarah Howard of CSX. She reached back out to me after, another representative from CSX, who I've talked to before about a couple of things, called me out of the blue, and said, hey, what's going on? I hear that you have continued your agreements, what was the problem? And you reached out to Sarah, who was in conversation with, probably about like February or March. And she reached back out to me and gave us a much reduced cost, and this is including us being able to use the site for, you know, farmers' markets, you know, temporary events. And then, I must count the last time you wanted me to ask them about maintaining it. Bringing up the parking lots to par, basically, before we actually signed the agreement. And what you see right there, that first paragraph or so, is her response, which I find, I have a few words for what I'm going to say, but...
They want to lease it to us as-is?
Yes.
Not touch it? For how much?
Well, second page here, third page, actually.
First year?
Yeah, 900 first year, year two's $1,200, year three's $1,500, and year four is 4% annual increases, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's much cheaper than what, what, $3,500 per year with 2%, which was, what was kind of, it was stopped back in like...
So, because he does everything else, Mason's volunteered to build the potholes and...
Well, I think that's ridiculous, that we're expected to upgrade their property. I mean, I would understand if it was already maintained and ready to go, but for us, we have to go in and fill in potholes and take care of the situation, for it to even, and what are we going to use it for? I mean, I think the main thing we're concerned about is barricades around there, but I'm thinking they're just going to put some barricades across there, so nobody can park there and assess what it's going to hold.
Well, the, the drug place is gone, so there's leave for parking for them gone.
So, what's everybody's thoughts on this? Because it's just going to keep going up every year.
Us paying all that money just so people can abandon their cars there, and I know there's a donation bid, they don't, they want it removed also.
And I know they want that removed, but who's even in charge of that?
I would.
Well, I would.
That's right, not us.
Right, so, that's not a question.
I don't know whether it's starvation army or bad, we won't want...
Well, I'm just saying, that's, that's on them to contact to get it off, they're probably not us, so...
The sad part is, I, I agree with Sarah when it comes to the upkeep of that parking lot.
I, I, the chamber should have done.
If it was in the agreement with the chamber, the chamber had to upkeep that, then that being in disarray is totally, falls on the chamber committee.
But was it in the agreement? We don't know.
According to her email, it was. 10-year old agreement.
Then why didn't they make them keep it up to par, is what I'm saying? You don't pass something a, a tenant does on to the new tenant to take care of.
That's a whole other set of dynamics, we don't know.
So, that's my only, I mean...
$1,500 a year, okay. You're going back to what you said, for people to maybe set their car there for sale, or just to abandon it?
I mean, I would want our officers, if we do not go forward with the rental, to at least, you know, run the plates and give some calls to these, the car owners, they know, I'm also going to post on Facebook. Just let them know, hey, your car's probably going to get towed by CSX if you don't remove it now, and everything. I want to give a heads up.
I think that's on CSX to reach out to us to do. I don't, I mean, if they want to contact the police and ask them to do that, but I don't know if we take that on as our responsibility to do.
I, I understand, I'm just trying to, I wouldn't know. If my car was there for a little while, I just parked it there, I live nearby, I don't want my car just towed one day, that...
Well, I understand, I don't think, I don't know.
I don't want...
Can they do that? As soon as they're out posted, I don't think they can legally do that.
Got posted, really?
They would have to post something, and then, 30 days later, I think they could probably start.
Yeah, when she states, where does she say this?
Really, are you using it?
What'd you say?
Just to continue a little use.
Yeah, that was a little...
Yeah. Well, again, it's not our property, it's theirs, so...
But the town's not using it.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's a select few residents that are using that.
Just blame it on us for people parking there, like, there's a police there alive.
Then, was the chamber supposed to police there alive, like, like that, even? That's okay, we got blamed for every rooster that was dropped off at that farm five miles away, too. Were you here for that one? We still don't know how they do it, they're going, well, we're roosters, please.
So, what is the consensus, do we want...
What was Marathon paying? Do we know?
Paying for what?
I mean, they may have been paying the chamber, but I don't know.
But we don't know what it was?
I'm almost positive Marathon said they didn't...
They didn't even want part of it.
Yeah, they didn't care.
So, they moved their dumpster.
Right.
Yeah, I called Marathon after we kind of come to the agreement with CSX the first time, and they said, those were the dumpsters, I couldn't care.
I mean, the chamber was only paying about $600. It wasn't the chamber only paying $600? I mean, and here's the thing, it's their property. The weeds need to be taken care of next year. We don't let them get out of control. That's not on us to do.
Eventually wore taken care of, but it was just, it's a minor negotiations with the company we use for other, other CSX parcels.
Well, it needs to be taken, they need to be held in line.
Well, we actually paid somebody to do it, didn't we?
Yeah, it was, like, Pine Line.
Because they give us so much money.
Pine Line, yeah.
So, why are we doing that? Why aren't we have, why are we...
So, those parcels were left off the overall agreement with Pine Line, because we didn't want to maintain a property that we didn't, we didn't rent. No, if somebody else was, were to rent the property, those parking lots, they would be responsible for it.
Right, but now it's CSX's to, to, they're responsible for it. It's their property, and no one's renting it.
Well, then it goes back to, it's our responsibility to move.
We don't rent the train, that's why.
Why are, why is it our responsibility?
Because of that agreement we have with CSX and Pine Line, even though it's not specifically labeled in the agreement with Pine Line, that is, at least the assumption.
From what point to what point are we responsible for? Because the entire tracks, all the way down...
Right.
It's out of control with weeds.
It's, it's been a very unrooted, I could word, agreement, and it's never really been perfect, never will be perfect, but, because I, when, with Chase, his agreement was just basically maintain all CSX property, it was this and this and that. And then we got into, when I came on board, we got very specific to a point where it's kind of hard to understand, because you don't go all the way down the tracks, we only go from here to here, and this parcel, this parcel here, and this parcel here, it's different. It's hard to... You guys are circling my side, you're... But, again, Pine Line did eventually trim and spray those two parcels later in the year, after I asked them, and then they kind of, like, they, they wanted to charge us more, like, no. Then they said, okay, you like, you...
Well, that's what I'm saying, we can't let it go all summer, I mean, that's our downtown. We can't let it go all summer. It has to be addressed early in spring, when it starts to grow, and it's up above, or what is it, five inches? It needs taking care of.
I would expect Pine Line to continue what they were doing later in the year after I talked with them, but there's no guarantee on that, but I think so. Good.
Well, we'll just have to stay on that next year.
Where are we on this, then? Kind of talked around it, but speaking for myself, I'm not in favor of renting. You know?
What did you say?
What I say, I, I'm not, I mean, it's just going to get more expensive.
Right.
And if they're not willing to maintain it, then let that be their, their problem, not ours.
And that's where I'm at, I said that when this came out, so what about...
We're going to make sure that you guys, you know.
Paula?
Paula? Yeah. If they're not willing to like fix it, then, I mean, there are potholes down there that could pretty much swallow a car. So if we then say we're gonna, at least if somebody blows a tire because of this pothole, then that's our fault. So we're not gonna take on somebody else's liability.
And you did say that we couldn't, um, I think I asked you this, who said that we couldn't like issue parking passes and charge for those?
Correct, correct, they have to be unpaid parking.
Okay, so I'm not. It's too much money to basically let it sit there and we've gotta maintain it for.
I'll let them know.
Oh, I'm sorry, is that your stool? It's okay. All right. So we're all in agreement, we're letting that go? All right. December ninth, public hearing at five P M.
Also the packet, I have the amended ordinance, basically stating that it will allow adeliers campus operators in the B two district. But also. Oh, I did, yeah, good. It didn't state it in the title, I don't think, but it does state further down, adeliers campus operators blah blah blah. Such operators shall not be permitted to develop, construct, or operate on any lot or parcel that directly abuts or is adjacent to a lot or parcel zoned for residential use. That was added by the planning commission. And council has the ability to amend this completely, reject it.
What was added, I'm sorry?
This one, number seven.
Right here, number seven. It was down to seven, section one is seven, or section one, yeah. That's the subsection one. We can discuss this way more in depth with the public hearing. We have a lot more to talk about, plenty of time. But then I have a first reading for, or if you, if you, council just doesn't even wanna go forward with this, then we don't have a first reading. I will need a motion from council to go forward with some variation of this anyways.
Which you can do next week.
Yes. You come on down and really speak the green gospel.
I'll be here to answer any questions. The public.
You're our in-house experts.
Is that hearing being held here?
Yes, it is. It's being held here Tuesday, December ninth.
We couldn't get the gymnasium?
If.
It's probably not.
It probably is.
The auditorium?
Auditorium?
Yeah.
Cafeteria? We'd probably go to the library and. I hear you. Okay.
All right. Onto Light Up North Baltimore. Thank you Paula for getting the flyers updated. I will get those distributed. You're gonna give them to Sue and we're gonna put it on the, the board out there. Remember, um.
The website too, right? Yeah, website, it's good. We're gonna put it on the library and the bulletin board up there, and we're gonna put it on the sign.
And Facebook.
And Facebook.
And then remember December twenty-second is when we will gather to vote, so make sure you've gone out and viewed all the streets before that, please. And we had said five o'clock, is there any, and I would have to ask Eric, would, would everybody be okay with four-thirty? Would that work for everyone or not? No? Oh, you said yes. I'm sorry, you were shaking your head and I'm like, no.
Yeah.
Yes. Can you do a four-thirty on the twenty-second?
Of December?
Yeah. We would probably want to do the judging in December.
The Monday?
The Monday?
Yeah.
Four-thirty? Yeah.
Can you get with that?
Yeah.
Okay. I will, I will reach out to Eric and ask him. So let's, let's plan on four-thirty unless Eric can't do that. Does that work for you, Josh?
I give you your four-thirties.
Um, let's see, is there anything else? Nope, that's it for.
That's my department, I'm doing real, I'm doing real good, so.
Do you have anything else though?
I did, I do have one thing that's just in passing. We haven't done anything about the economic development dinner and we're gonna keep it that way for a little bit.
All right, any questions for Bill? Moving on to personal policy and ordinance review, our event policy.
Yep. Also the packet, we have two-page all events permit application, it was one page, now it's two.
All right. I do have a couple of questions on the event policy. And I know I read this, but then I don't know if it was in here. Did you address the gray water?
I believe it's in the policy itself.
It is, I think we made, we need to make it clear that there is absolutely no dumping into our storm sewers. So we need to add that. And then I also thought you added something with the electric wires being covered, so it's not a trip hazard, but I didn't see it in here. And I may have overlooked it, but.
Yes, you got the gray water to the top.
But it doesn't say that, you know, absolutely no dumping into our storm sewers. And that's because that's where vendors get confused, they think they can.
And then the next one is the next one, it's right there.
Okay, so it was on there. And then the only other thing that I disagree with on here is, well, and did it say the health department, food license was that in there as well? The one thing that I disagree with on here is when it comes to the liability insurance. It states that council or, I don't know what's that now.
Insurance requirements?
Uh, the require, you could waive it. Why in the world administrator or council could waive the insurance requirements? Why should we do that?
If it's a free speech protest of sorts. We don't wanna have undue restrictions.
But I guess, I think it needs clarified that, you know. Because we wouldn't wanna be waiving it for a festival or a, where there's vendors coming in.
If we waive it, we're gonna talk about what it is.
Oh, yeah, I hear, yeah, right underneath, and the event, if the event is sponsored by the village, a First Amendment demonstration or otherwise covered under village insurance, you need to waive it. So it's a tax. Yeah.
Then I think it needs to be approved by council if it's gonna get waived.
Understood.
Well, it sounds. Yeah, but it says by the village administrator or.
But I think it needs approve, approval from council if it's gonna get waived. I mean, I can understand if somebody's just speaking that, yeah, you wouldn't need that, but I guess in the future, I don't wanna.
Sorry, be approved.
I don't wanna use in future.
Think about being approved by council is a timing thing.
That's, yeah.
Well, this, all this insurance stuff has to be in, isn't it at least thirty days ahead?
Sixty.
Sixty days ahead.
Sixty, sixty. I mean, you have to submit this application in these sixty days ahead of time. I can definitely root that straight there.
So what are you requiring from food vendors? Their license and, is someone in charge of notifying the health department?
The village will notify them of permit?
Where are you seeing that at?
Number eight.
Number five has the tripping hazards and other things. By the way. Yep.
Okay.
I would notify the health department thirty days prior to each approved event or sooner. This still needs to go through with the blessing of Paul, your insurance also.
And anything else that you have for personal policy?
I don't have anything else.
Any questions? We're gonna move on to finance and technology.
Oh, I don't really have anything major other than one thing I just wanted everybody to think about, about like a pay scale. Cause we don't really have an updated pay scale. I think we really need to come up with something, you know, for different, for everybody actually, who's being paid in the village. And we've got, you know, seems like we get a lot of people asking for more, more and more money, but I mean, what is our top pay? I mean, we don't, I mean.
There's no ceiling.
Where do we outdo ourselves here, you know? I mean, somebody keeps on asking for more and more money. I think we need to have a ceiling of what is going on with this, you know?
Well, that's a discussion, you, boy, you and I go clear back to my joint, talking about that.
I believe the last one was twenty fifteen, I think that's even mentioned in our wage resolution. I've been working on it a little bit here and there. It's definitely not ready to be in front of council, but it's definitely.
Yeah, I think with Matt, you know, he knows the money, right? I mean, he knows what's gonna, what we can handle.
Right.
If we just keep on going up and up and up, and it just makes me a little nervous that. I think we should have a pay scale where everybody should be there.
No, I would agree with that. We should have a, a starting and a, a top amount, so.
I'll keep working on it a little bit more, I can get you a draft soonish, maybe end of week.
And did everybody have a chance to go over Matt's email that he sent with the budget and the pay increases that were asked? Are those gonna be on next Tuesday's meeting?
That would go to be discussed during the executive session.
Which will be Tuesday?
Monday and Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday. And I think, now, what time is Monday's meeting? Four-thirty?
Four-thirty.
Okay. Cause I think we need it at six as well, so, okay.
Did you say you could and couldn't make that one?
Yeah, I did.
See, both you and I have, let's say.
We will be having executive session before legislation on Tuesday, so we can get Paul off to speed and discuss more in depth before we do a possible vote for the wage resolution and appropriations. Yeah, both, third, third reading.
The votes, the third reading right now, is the name?
It makes sense to have the lieutenant manager.
Right. Good plan, okay.
Thanks, Jim.
So did you have anything, Matt, or something else you wanted to add?
I mean, basically, I don't know if you wanna follow the agenda down, they have like fiscal office, fiscal officers.
It's fine.
We wanna jump the mine we can and affect the administrator. Mason compiled this agenda, so we're doing a fine job there. My topics, when I sent it out, I had net to my three-sixty on it, but Brian actually covered that. Just giving you an update, Brian, real good update there. Mary's Port Software is just still coming along for April and Chloe will be entering information into that here, to the new system here in December. It's entering it into both the old and the new. So just still a work in progress there. All the other stuff on my list, well, I guess number three was Jackson Township EMS agreement. That was, had the third reading last Tuesday, so I reached out to our contact, Jackson Township's contact. So at this point, it just needs to get with them. The mayor's authorized to sign that agreement, so we're, we're getting, you know, moving forward, getting closer. That was number three on my topics list, not, not number three on the agenda, but. And then I have some ordinances and resolutions, all third readings next Tuesday to night. Supplemental appropriations. So far, I think I've added one thing, one appropriation. I need to look at some of the wages, we're down to payroll released on Thursday, so two days from now, but, but it's already been entered in the computer show, basically down to one day roll. So I think that actually gets released on the eighteenth, so we're getting close. Transfer of funds, everybody had that in the email, I don't know if there's any questions of that. That's ordinance number two-twenty-five dash thirty-three. I talked about that previously. Mainly that entails moving money from the general fund into other, other funds, but it does have something to do with water and sewer also. Do they have any questions so far? Just gonna go down through my list. The email that was brought up was the annual appropriations. I, when the first reading, I didn't have that ready for everybody to see. As, as in the email, you can see it's rather involved, where you have every line item. So I was able to export that out of U A N and, and do an Excel sheet where I could label them, which I thought was nice for everybody to come to see. Like when, when we say police, it comes out of the general fund, you can see exactly. If you don't customize it, you're not gonna see, we're not gonna see the word police. You just, for me, I just know by the numbers, same with brochures and then on and on, so, you know, fire, EMS, everybody, and you're able to see the, like the coding. So, so that's, that was all emailed out. With the intentions of final approval being next Tuesday, so. And then the wage resolution, we just talked about the same deal, with the intentions of it being approved on Tuesday. The wage resolution and the annual appropriations are tied closely together because wages are a big part of your cost of the year, so. If there's gonna be some changes in the wage resolution, then it needs to reflect in the appropriations, so. With that being said, it sounds like we're probably gonna talk about that some on Monday. Sound fair?
On that note, when I looked over it, I still have concerns, and I know we don't have the answer yet as far as how we're doing the festival committee and, and the mayor's discretionary fund, if that's legal to do. And those, those line items are in there and we need to know them, which brings me to another subject with the festival money to be appropriated for that. Are we interested in doing something for the two-hundred-and-fifty years? Are we interested in doing something on Fourth of July, trying to? So again, that would, I think, fall under, is this festival committee just one, one festival? Or does it cover all festivals in town? You know, how does that?
I would say it covers festivals it hosts.
So it could cover.
If it hosts it, it covers it, but if it doesn't, then.
But that's what I'm saying, we don't know how this is all set up. And so we kinda need to know that to know how we do here, because we may not wanna give all that money to there if we're gonna do other things in town. Because we've got our two-hundred-and-fifty coming up in February, or I'm sorry, a hundred-and-fifty is coming up in February if we wanna do something for that. Or combine it and do something in July to cover our hundred-and-fifty and two-hundred-and-fifty. I, I don't know what everybody wants to do. I mean, is this body wanting to do something for July, like July fourth, like fireworks or something like that?
Yeah, I guess it'd be for the mayor if he'd say yes, we would want to.
I do too.
You know, I'm willing to reach out to see, because here's the thing, if, if we could, I, I know from past when we were trying to get fireworks for the town. Hancock Wood had donated a lot, but they were donating to the chamber because they had a five-oh-one C three. They didn't want to donate to the individual town because they didn't have the five-oh-one C three. That's why we need to know where this thing is, what it, what it covers and how we can proceed. Because we could then open it up to get donations for fireworks, get some fireworks back in town. So I, I just need to know where everybody's at, if you're willing to help facilitate this, if we do it, you know.
I'd say, then we've got a, the village has got a festival committee, why not?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I know there's a body.
But that's what I'm asking, is it just for their good old summertime one? Is it all festivals to mention?
I think it's all festivals, I think they do whatever, you know, they're open to whatever. I mean, I don't think it's just good old summertime. I think they'll.
Right.
Come up with a good idea, they, they probably listen.
And that's the thing, if it's the villages, and I think we had talked about amending it to have a couple council members on the, on the committee as well.
I don't believe it's the villages.
It is not.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if it's not, then how does the village put something on?
No, I mean, work together with, with them is what I would say, I mean, I'm sure they would be. And if they got the committee with the five-oh-one C three, you know, I guess work with them.
I think we need to talk to Paul, cause Paul mentioned something to me at the last meeting, that it could be facilitated to the point of. that it could be facilitated to the point of where council has some regulation over it, if we're going to be donating a lot of money to it. So I think Paul needs to kind of explain that to the entire group.
I was under the understanding past the first donation.
Well, it wasn't a donation, that's the thing.
Correct, but when we did that, when we allocated that for that, that was like to cover because they couldn't get the donation. That after that initial allocation, council's no longer going to be...
But it's on our budget that we're going to. That's why I want everybody to look at the budget, because it's on our budget. That seven thousand dollars is gonna be appropriated for that. And then there's seven thousand dollars for the mayor's discretionary fund, which again, I was in question whether that was even legal, and I want to know if it is. I need to know that, or I'm not going to, I'm not going to approve that this time.
I did send another Paul Miloszkowski attorney for both our hook and ladder, but also the local festival organization today, give some clarification. He did say...
On the five oh one C three, but not on the other subject. And so we need that checked, because there are, there's fourteen thousand dollars out there that we're gonna be voting on next week that I, I question, so...
They have fourteen thousand dollars for next year?
Seven, seven. There's two different line items, seven for the festival and seven for the mayor's discretionary fund. And I want to know if both of those, and just like Paul said, it was, it was to help them out. And the thing is, it's tying, when we donate all that money to them, then we're tying our hands whether we can do anything else. And if we have no control over that, then they can do whatever with that money, and they don't even have to put on another festival. That's why I'm saying, and I think that, that Paul was saying, that you can amend that to where council can have a say in it. So something to think about.
It's no different with the chamber. I mean, when the chamber ran it, you had no say.
Right.
Council had no say in...
Well, I understand that, but we weren't donating that kind of money either. We weren't, you know what I'm saying? It's just something to think about. And I think we need some answers before we include that in there.
But you are the festival committee.
I am not, I am not on it.
Who would have thought that?
That's just what I'm saying. And that's where, and that's where...
Jim Phillips, Terry Brights.
Terry Bright.
And when it came to the chamber's events, I would take the hall events permit application was provided, right?
Yeah.
So there was something by council. Ideally, they would have named the villages, just insured on their insurance, so they, so they had insurance. And then, then it happened.
Then the council gave fourteen thousand dollars? Probably not.
It wasn't, yeah.
Right. So really, the disconnect from the chamber to what it is now is not the same.
Right.
It's apples to oranges, really, so...
And they're still expecting a donation.
Yeah, I mean, if we're funded, then we should have say. If we're not, then they give...
Well, we're funding, we're funding the five oh one C three. We don't need that, that's right.
Right.
And if we, if we are, if we are, then we should have a say in it, absolutely, so... So by next week, before we vote on this, we have to determine what we're doing with those two line items. Now, if, if we don't have the answers, we can take them off and reappropriate it after the first year.
The end.
Right. And that would be the safer route to go, in my opinion.
Yep, we don't have the answers yet. So I guess Matt, hey, it's okay, I guess you should have a list of, you know, bullet points of what we should discuss one after another for during executive sessions for X, Y, Z. Just sort of on the same page, sound good?
Makes sense, yeah.
And then, like I said, we need to be thinking, do we want to do something?
With what Pan brought up?
Right. Because I think, you know, I think it's kind of sad at the beginning. So I'm willing to, you know, do something, you know, if need be. I'm hoping everybody else is too.
Think about it. What can we make?
Say one fifty.
One fifty and...
With a tree.
All the police officers, wow. I nominate Mason here as mayor of the festival. Mayor of the two fifty halls.
So be thinking about that, because we need to get moving on that, you know, to plan something. That's what we're gonna do.
Do I hear that?
Okay, Matt, did you have anything else that you wanted to...
No, not really.
All right, then we are going to, any questions for Matt or Tim? And then we're gonna back up and Josh, what do you have to...
So a picture here. This picture was taken by me at Carter Park in Golden Green. Heavy idea, just back in my head. And then Mason and I had a meeting with two potential Eagle Scouts. And we talked about a couple ideas we had for, you know, this and that, most of the park. And I brought this up. They seem to love the idea, but it's not even this one exactly, but this was the idea. We are thinking about putting a smaller one nearby the sledding hill to notify them, you know, that they will be on it. But also, you know, on public events and all that, so sledding and this, et cetera, et cetera. And then also one by, by community garden, and that's, I expand the parking lot there. The rock, Danish founder we have, like that. So they're still working on the design and all that. I have a blessing yet to say, go ahead, but they're already working on it, what, two weeks ago?
What's his thoughts on the end?
That is for dog, beezies.
Oh, no, it's just for bags.
Oh, bags. Bags and dogs.
Take a look.
Or goose coop, don't matter. Lots of bags.
Goose coop, go ahead. But I thought this would be a good addition to the park. I hope council agrees on that.
Who maintains the flyers and...
I mean, that could be...
I mean, if it's not, I mean, it's not like...
I'm guessing Mason.
It would be us. We would be looking with, I guess, public works to a point if they want to set something up.
Is this just village information, or is this private information that they can give you and put in there?
My thoughts was mostly, well, we do both, we do a combination of it. I know community garden stuff, maybe the...
Or community event thing.
Community events and stuff like that. What you see here also is a QR code to the Golden Green website, which you donate to the park also. So I'm thinking about doing that and also having the village donate to fireworks, starting to the T and R program. Also have that ability at our desk here, too.
Again, how can I do that?
I always donate, I believe, right? Am I mistaken on that, Matt? Someone's trying to donate to our police department right now.
See, we need to check on that, because if we can, if we could accept donations to fireworks, we could put boxes out at the...
You would do, except donations, they're just not going to be exempted.
The thing is, is when they put money in there, it's not, they never did it anyhow, so...
But like, Hancock Wood, when they...
They want a tax. No, I understand, I understand.
I prefer it to be all electronic, you know, just do the QR codes and all that, so no, no money being actually touched. But something we gotta work on with you.
But I would think that would need a separate account, like it would have to be separated and...
That's the question for community link and that, which we, we talked about a little bit before already. It's twenty twenty-six project.
Because I was under the impression we could not, but that's, it would be nice to know.
Well, we have to, because a last body cam, so paid for by the Eagles.
Could you check in there?
So, yeah, this is a very similar one.
But I would like, next community garden and a smaller one for the whole, so it's a good idea to council.
Eagle Scout project.
I like it.
Yeah.
I think it's more beneficial to residents and some other stuff that's been done in the past.
Are you just having one, or did I hear you're having more than one?
There's two. A smaller one of this kind of thing, over by the sledding hill, and one about this size by the community garden.
Okay.
The fire district, I keep the books for, they got it. It's a request, leaving pass the way, we're talking like, well done money. We're talking like a hundred eighty thousand dollars. We're talking a lot of money, you know, and that one's legal.
Yes.
It's, I mean, in that capacity. That went through an audit like six years ago, and they, they wanted to see documentation. One of the auditors, but there wasn't anything, yeah, there wasn't anything like alarming about it. They just wanted documentation on it.
And the last thing here is a better updated code report from the courts. Goes through things, actually, dominally, littering cases, not for vehicles, kids are referred to BG court, kids are referred to mayor's court. And then him and I are slowly working on getting rid of dangerous buildings, it's called in our code. You know, we were gonna go for it with that with the quarry building, but I got the health department to work with them, and that was demolished, that little building out there.
That little building out there?
The quarry building then was...
Serious.
Everything out there.
It's gone?
Yeah.
Wow, how a loser.
Yeah, I, I, instead of going through the same process that the previous code force, force you went with, I just decided to go with the, kind of the health department and told them to do my work for me, basically. And they demolished, gotcha.
Stuff's getting done all over. That old house and trailer and stuff up there on Rugo, just outside of town.
Old castle place.
That, that big pile of tires, all kinds of stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And township got it done. Very proud of them. It's, it's clean.
But there's, there's a couple buildings, mostly outbuildings, you know, garages that are imploding on themselves. And then we're, we're gonna slowly work to get those actually demolished.
Any, any update on our guy on eighteen across from the center?
Oh, that, that gentleman, he's in the middle of his thirty day violation. And he's gonna be sent back to bowling court if he is not cleaning up his property. And will receive a worse consequence, if you may say it, the second time around.
It's a more serious charge.
It's a more serious charge, yes. So I, I hope it doesn't go that route, but it, I probably will.
The ones across from the Bud Company on Polo Road. One of those three vehicles were in that backyard, and it's kind of grown up around.
Can anybody look there?
Talk about the woods north of Tishon?
No, right across the street, little green house, it's that, it's the only thing there.
No, no, not that one. I, I agree about that one, but come, come south.
Two oh one south.
It's right, it's right on the corner, it's got trees growing up around the house, but in the back is three vehicles.
Talk about two oh one south though, it's a corner house.
It's only a block to water. It's a block south of water.
I believe, it's a corner house.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, they own that a tire block. We had assessed their property twice, with a third party, we used, Griffith Land, taken for that one. That, the mother died, if I understand, if I remember correctly. And then the son is in a home of sorts. I have not kept up to date on it like recently, but I believe it's just kind of like a probate of sorts or kind of a handy, but we're working on what we can register them to take. The houses are just kind of hard to approach.
Now, you know what's one I need to clean up?
Yeah.
We are aware of that.
Right, did you have anything else that you needed to add?
I think we're good.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or anything else they want to add?
We need to change Matt's plaque to fiscal officer and finance officer.
Well, he seems to be outdated like us and stuff, you know, so...
Yeah.
Looks a little dated.
I can, I can best man on it.
Huh? Mason, how you doing?
Reminder, everyone, please get your questions for the sheriff in to Josh by Thursday. Let's say Thursday by noon, because then he's got to get them to us, so we have them for Friday morning, so, don't forget.
I got one question to back up to the hall events format.
Uh-huh.
Where, where it's the liability insurance part of it. Let's just say somebody wants to put on a graduation party. I know, like, down here, they wanted that blocked off. They gotta have insurance for that?
No, I say we, I think council would waive in that situation, without the...
I mean, is it their home?
Yeah, they just want to...
Oh, yeah, no, I would...
No, it's like the street in front of blocked off.
Yeah, they blocked off the...
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so.
They're not an organization hosting it, and they're just doing something personally for a block, I don't see that being a big problem.
No, I think it's when we're bringing, you know, vendors in and we're having other people come in and, and stuff like that, I think. That's one of the private part of that.
This is a question for Josh and Sergeant Brochus. We talked before, I think you walked in, about the timing for posting the chief position. Is there anything, for lack of a better term, and forgive me for this, a good old boys' club, you can kind of get warned out? There's going to be an opening?
Yeah, I mean, I've talked to a few people, I've asked around, some, I haven't found anybody interested yet. You know, I think, I talked to the mayor, and he assured me that the paperwork is started for the chief to retire. And we had talked about it, that when he gets ready to do interviews, he'd like to have me here and maybe Golden Green Police Chief, perhaps.
You mean the last one?
Actually, to be present, to kind of weed out some of that stuff. Because he, he had, somebody approached him that they were interested in, and I did a quick little background. I showed him that you don't want that person. It takes, you really need to be more careful in choosing those, those positions, you know, so that it don't set you up for problems in the future. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just a quick update also on the policy. I also put in here, I also wanted more say so from our public work superintendent. So I have him down here to get signature, added that. I also create and impose additional safety, traffic control, emergency access requirements. I want to make sure he has more discretion. He's the one doing a lot of the work, he should have, he knows most of all this, what committees are done, so he's in there. Also, I have on here, I don't know if you, if you've read this, you probably haven't talked about this. Events anticipating more than a hundred attendees require coordination with the Wood County Sheriff's Office auxiliary unless the mayor determines that current police manpower is sufficient. Does that sound reasonable to you?
Well, we had said, no, last time, no, that's, that is another situation. Because we had said last time that we need police coverage, but there wasn't sufficient coverage as far as... I, you know, I talked to Sergeant Robertson. He said that, you know, there was only one person and, I don't even know if you had backup, but they were covering the entire town too. We need to have designated that we have police officers just for the event, not, not doing pulling double duty, not trying to protect our town and a festival. That, that means, I mean, don't you agree?
Oh, absolutely. It means we coordinate it better.
Right.
Like one or seven?
In advance, because we have a, a pretty healthy auxiliary power. We picked up some more people that can really help with these kinds of things.
Right. So I, I just think that needs to be mandatory, that we have...
I mean, I think it kind of is. I mean, and the mayor is basically our, our safety services director in many ways, and he would make that determination. That's how I have it, at least for now.
He would make what determination?
Again, unless the mayor determines that current police manpower is sufficient, but otherwise, we have to reach out to the county sheriff's office auxiliary.
But again, is, when you say our current, is that the ones that are on duty to cover our, our town at that time? Because I don't agree with that.
It would be who would call, who would sign up to work above and beyond.
It would be the...
We have auxiliary, we have part of our...
But this last time, that's not how that went down. And that's what I'm saying. We need to make sure that doesn't happen again.
We didn't get, I don't know if, well in advance notice of what was going on.
Right.
There were some issues.
Why are you starting with Wood County? It feels a bit backwards.
I mean, there's us, and there's Wood County, we are your friends.
But you're saying that you have, require with Wood County. Unless the mayor determines, like, it just seems backwards to me. determines, like, it just seems backwards, wouldn't you start with our people first?
There just needs to be sufficient police coverage.
Well, we are, we do have our people, and that, that's why the mayor has the ability to-
Yeah, I would say our police chief, our mayor-
It is our people's first.
Our mayor.
Unless the mayor determines otherwise pretty much, that we are insufficient.
Again, I, I'm back to determines what, that the, the police that we have on duty for the day, the two officers we have on duty today, for the day, can cover the town and the festival, that's where I feel the confusion's going to come, if we don't reword that differently. Because I don't believe our officers that are taking care of our village should have to worry about manning the festival as well. I just don't think that, I just don't think that's smart. If they're off, okay, just for instance, they're off handling a situation in the village, and something happens at the, the festival, what do we do? What, are we going to pull one away from here, say, say a domestic is going on, are we going to pull one officer away to take care of this and leave that one on a domestic to handle it by himself? That's exactly what we don't want to do to our officers.
I defer this question to the acting chief, Brochus over here. What would the logistics be on that?
Well, if we have proper notification, you know, I can have more than, you know, a few days or a week, and we can set stuff up to make sure that I have people designated.
So you're going to have more than two officers?
Oh, absolutely.
That's what I'm saying, but that's not what happened last time.
No, it's great reading, no.
Right, and that's what I'm trying to avoid, and I want the wording to reflect that, because that didn't happen last time, and I, and why didn't it happen? So I just want the wording to reflect that the officers are separate from our, our officers that are on regular duty.
Okay, you want a, a mandatory one or two officers outside of the festival itself?
Well, we have our, the festival would have its own officers, basically, to man the festival. Our officers, I mean, they could be there for backup if something big went down, but I'm saying, our officers need to be able to focus on the village and the safety of the rest of the residents, not worry about a festival and doing that. So I, I believe there, there has to be the officers for the festival that are just working the festival, and whether they're auxiliary or, or whatever, but the officers that we have on duty for every shift, they need to be able to take care of the village and not have to worry about that. And they could be called for backup, I get that, if something happened, but they can't be the ones in charge of that over here, because that's just, that's just too much.
Yeah, I can work on the wording on that.
Okay, that's what I appreciate.
Real quick question. I know the water bridge was open and everything, it looks really nice and everything, and I noticed a lot of people, even kids, walking on the, up on Broadway Street now, and going to school, walking across that bridge, and how narrow it is, any chance of that getting upgraded some back?
Do you want the Eagleville Bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because I see a lot of kids go over that.
Yes, I-
Walking wise.
The Wood County engineer has, so I got the study, the guy from EGL, but a study was done on the bridge and the pole road intersection there, I gotta get that, that's a reminder.
Mason reminded.
But, thank you, but, but yeah, that bridge is like 97 years old.
Yeah.
Approximately, it'll probably be getting rebuilt when it's 100, but at this rate, but we, we're working on it, haven't worked on it, and we're trying to push engineer differently, so.
All right, thank you.
Along with adding on the north side a little sidewalk, because we're trying to make sidewalk all the way to Eagle, I think, so.
All right, that was good.
We did 100 of those, 100, 130.
Oh, boy.
Don't worry, because we're going to get you guys hats, so you can put them on.
My, my really good, it's on top or something. Get it working.
All right, anybody else have anything that we're going to turn this?
11, 12.